Okay, we're ready to get started again. Again, thank you all for being here tonight for our regular council meeting of October 26th, 2017. A little late getting started, but it's okay. It's a robust discussion here at the Agenda Work Session. Mr. Manning, it's good to see you tonight. Mr. Manning, it's good to see you tonight. If you wouldn't mind coming to give us our invocation and pledge to the flag, please. Everyone, please stand.
Bless the Lord, please. Our heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, Father. We ask you, Lord, to guide each person in this council and by your account, everybody here. And, Lord, we ask you, Lord, to be what you have us to be, Father. And, Lord, bless those who are sick tonight, so that they will feel the death anger feeding, Father. Have that way, Lord Jesus, now. Amen. Our pledge to the flag, please. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, remevvied and just for all. Thank you, sir.
All right, well. Janet, we can have the roll roll, please.
Mayor Lightner.
Here.
Bass Pro School.
Here.
Councilmember Haele.
Here.
Councilmember Elton.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Senator Miller.
Here.
Senator Hahn.
Here. All right. And we did have a special presentation tonight. It's not marked on the agenda, but we had a little email exchange earlier. I'll make sure that I told everybody the right things, don't? You want to take it from here? Everybody get that email right. Scott, you did? Did you see it?
I don't. I didn't get all my emails today, honestly.
I was...
I bet he was busy most of today.
I was literally on my way here. So, okay.
Bob Neville, who works with us as much as we have time to with the RAM, which is a regional remote area medical, where we actually turned the Camp Jordan Arena into a hospital. He wanted to come tonight. He appreciates what you folks do, what they reach out and touch many, many folks. I forget how many teeth were pulled. It makes me nervous to even think about it and how many glasses they might even know that, but here they are.
Let me see your glasses. Your glasses.
Okay. We must have the same problem.
Glasses right here.
Eight-hundred-and-twenty... Oh! It's bad if you got a big double chin, you get a problem.
I'm sure you've got one in the cell.
Not today. If I did, I'd jump up with that glass coffee table. Anyway, patients, eight-hundred-and-eighty. Extractions, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighteen this year. Two thousand fourteen, they did eighteen-twenty. A hundred-and-ninety-two fillings, a hundred-and-seventeen cleanings, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight eyeglasses, a hundred-and-seventy-two general medical. Get this, folks. This is what you did for your area. Four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars in medical costs you saved these folks. Y'all did a good job. So now, Bob Neville, I'll turn over to you and I'll take pictures.
As I say, I'm the chair of the Hamilton County RAM Host Group, and as I say, the numbers that Stump just gave us did not happen without Camp Jordan Arena. RAM is actually based out of Knoxville, Tennessee. They do over a hundred clinics each year, and as I was saying to the mayor earlier, they say that Camp Jordan is a perfect venue in terms of providing care to these people. So I want to thank you on behalf of not only the RAM Host Group, but also the eight-hundred-and-twenty patients that we see here. And to show our appreciation, we'd like to present each one of you with a plaque as well as a T-shirt. And you'll notice on the back of your plaques that every year that we do a RAM clinic, we have a note in the Chattanooga Times Free Press in the 15s, and that recognizes the City of Eastridge. But the other thing that I need to say is that you have a very good facility, but person to person, every person we've dealt with, whether it be the Police Department, Parks and Recreation, Administration, I mean, you've got the quality of people that are working for the City of Eastridge. I think you'll be very proud, and it's a great group for us to work with. We thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And there's one in here for the city as well. Have an idea, can I talk to you?
Let's go back there, let's take a picture.
How about we take a picture holding up our T-shirts?
Yeah.
How's that?
There, I'll take that if you can go there. Y'all go down there, just take a picture, please. Phil said that. That'd be better for the white guy. Just stand back there against the seal while I stand right here. Y'all get close to it, y'all get with it, please. You step out. Step out in front of them, there's a small... Y'all close, y'all close by, there you go. Now move over here. Bob, step out, like she is. Move over, over.
The seal over there.
I know we're about to see you, Bob. Come on, y'all. You step out, Bob. There, we're going to Jackie's with me. Now we make your work. Perfect. One, two, and seven. One, two, and seven. One more time. One, two, three. Thank you all so much.
All right, thank you all. All right. I trust that everyone has had opportunity to review the consent agenda, the items contained therein, the September 28th Agenda Work Session minutes, and the minutes from the regular council meeting in September 28th, as well as the financial report from August and September 2017. Motion approved. We have a motion and a second to approve. Yes, sir.
Is this Allen, Allen, how you got the call?
Yes.
Yes.
We were completed with that. Allen?
Yes. Allen, we received...
That's what I missed.
I know we received that one hundred and six thousand.
We received that. No, they're still, he hasn't till December 31st, and that case remains open. And it's still pending, and it's actually set for trial January, but he doesn't satisfy his obligation to pay rent since the 31st. And I sent an actual email this week as a status as to whether he's paying for that.
How much, you know how much outstanding is?
I want it as thirteen-five.
We got the big pay.
Yeah, I want a big pay, because that's the...
Can the soccer, is purchased a new equipment? What type of new equipment did they purchase?
I think it was some goals and nets, was it not?
They changed the goal size last year. We had to purchase some new goals. Our nets wear out about every year. We had to purchase some nets. We buy balls every year, things like that. And then we had one goal that was torn up, and we actually bought the parts and fixed it so that we could use it. Did we ever get the other new lawn mower in? That they're supposed to use? Yes. That they're supposed to buy? Yes, we've got both lawn mowers around, and we're using both lawn mowers. And we also purchased two more for the parkway and just pushovers, and we're using them as well.
Okay, is there anything else?
I was going to say, I was at another sports venue, soccer place here last week. I think I got a little sad, but most of the nets are with Raggedy, terrible. Martha?
I just wanted to mention one thing very quickly. I always keep my eye on the local auction sales tax collections. It's like through August, we were thirty-two thousand dollars ahead of where we were at this time last year. Through September, we're forty-seven thousand dollars ahead of where we were. And where we were last year was twenty percent ahead of where we were the year before.
Just reading, number two, they were a lot behind on us, too.
Right, exactly. And just looking dollar, compared to dollar, we're ahead of where we were. Should be music to the ears.
Take that roll roll, please.
Bass Pro School.
Yes.
Councilmember Haele.
Yes.
Councilmember Elton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Lightner.
Yes. At this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. I have several who have signed in here, and I'm going to go through my regular commentary. If you have a... I'm sorry, Janet, I grabbed my office down there. Thank you. If you are a residential business owner here at the City of Eastridge and have a common question or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. Just come to one of the two microphones here at the front, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes. Again, we do have some folks who have signed in. Ms. Brande W. The first name is going to be Carl Frost from 1115 Hillsborough Drive.
Good afternoon, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
My wife and I, both retired professionals, moved here fourteen months ago. Love and love you home, and we're very, very happy with the city and the services, and happy you live in here. But there's a but. And the but is we have visitors from family and friends from Purvisboro, Cookville, Daytona Beach, and Las Vegas. And while we're proud of our home and we're proud of the city, I hesitate to take any of my visitors up and down Ringgold. And the reason why is it looks like a war zone. And I'm going to tell you that there's thirty or forty percent of the buildings are empty, just plain empty. And when we get down to our end of the street, so now I hear of Black Hawk, it's worse. We've been here fourteen months, we've seen one new company come in, or we've seen three leave. So it's not going in the right direction. My question is, is the city doing anything to actively promote and get new businesses and bring their street up because it looks like hell now? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We are indeed. We're very encouraged by a lot of what we're seeing. There are plenty of empty storefronts, no doubt about that. We do have several new businesses that have come to town, are about to open, in the process of building. We have some real estate deals that we know about that are bubbling just beneath the surface, things that are about to happen. Again, I think the situation with Ringgold Road is kind of a common affliction. You look at other places that are as old.
Would you disagree?
No, I wouldn't. Look at areas of Hickson Pike, Raider Road, places like that, you're going to see a lot of empty storefronts. You're going to see, again, kind of a mishmash of development, which is very similar to Ringgold Road. And I would very much disagree that we're moving in the wrong direction. I think we're absolutely moving in the right direction. You say you've been here for fourteen months. I've been here for forty-one years. I've lived here my entire life. I've seen in the nineteen-eighties, which is kind of considered a golden era, I've seen a period of prolonged stagnation that got us to a point where there just wasn't much happening. But there's a lot happening right now, particularly comparatively. As I referenced earlier, our sales tax revenues in 2017 were twenty percent higher than they were in 2016. We're higher than that in the current year compared to last year. We do have a lot of good things going on. We have items that we're dealing with that will improve the quality of life. We have sidewalk projects, we have recreational projects going on. It's not just economic development that I think is going in the right direction. It's a lot of different areas. It is, you know, there are... If I could wave a magic wand to make all the ugly spots go away, I would do that. But we don't have that ability. We are working every day to make a difference, to improve it. And again, I thank those who have been here for an extended period of time can look and say, boy, there's a lot more going on right now than there was five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen years ago. So now, I'm proud of what we're doing. It's perfect, it's absolutely not perfect. There's still a lot of work to do. But I appreciate your... I do appreciate your concerns and that you bring it forward, I really do.
I've lived in Martha's City, and I've never seen a street as empty, this street is restored as it looks like, you know. It's a city's job to promote if you did that, they know it. What are you doing for taxes? What are you doing to approach businesses and getting them to move here? Is the city doing anything like that?
That's... The question is almost... That's a very strange question. We have... We have a border region district as designated by the state. We have Bass Pro Shops that opened a year ago. We have Dunkin' Donuts, Firehouse Subs that are about to open, Chick-fil-A is announced, there's an Hampton Inn going in. There is, again, three or four, I'm sorry, Marco's Pizza coming in. There are a lot of different things, good things, that are happening. We've had, two years ago, three years ago, we had the Walmart Market open on a piece of property that was sad, to say the least. So we have made a tremendous amount of progress. And perhaps it's not visible from a relatively... A relative newcomer, that's not... I don't mean that offensively. But if you've only been here fourteen months, you can't... I'm not sure you can appreciate how far we've come.
You mean it was worse than it was, even is?
Yes, sir. I would say it was considerably worse than it is right now. Looks like we have... I'm very proud of my community. I am.
My wife and I plan to retire if we're good, unless she would like to see a bin on the streets.
I think you'll see it best in the years like that. Whether it's watching start up.
We've got, right now, I've got three grants that are going to do sidewalks and streetscaping from McBryant to Limerly Road, two tap grants and one multimodal grant. The council also, about a meeting or two meetings ago, approved an engineer to do a streetscape project from Limerly Lane all the way to the tunnels, and we've looked at appropriate five million dollars served for that project. And it will include drainage, that will include street lighting, that will include sidewalks on those sides. We are working to proceed. It's not something that I snap my fingers to and go through, but that we're using border region sales tax dollars to do. On the sidewalk program, a lot of the signage that you see out there, proliferation of signage, those signs are going to have to go because they're in the right of way for the sidewalks to go. So we're going to be dealing next year and the year after with a lot of replacement signs. We have a facade treatment program which matches appropriations by the city, ten thousand dollars up to twenty thousand. If you do assign it, you sign this for your business, it costs twenty thousand dollars, you split that, you give ten thousand dollars for it. We have money appropriated for this. My office is working with numerous businesses right now. I'm not going to be able to tell you what the status of those are, but up and down Ringgold Road, it's slowly coming.
I appreciate your comments, and I think with the streetscape project, I think that will possibly entice some developers to want to open things on that area. I appreciate you coming up and expressing your feelings, but we are working on it.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you loving Eastridge, thanks, sir. All right, next person is Ms. Mary Lambert, 701 North Borough.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. This is really just a presentation. The Office of the Surgeon General of the U.S. Public Health Service Commission, the Foundation, we held our conference in June here. I apologize for the delay of getting here. I had a little matter with my son, who moved from his family, and a couple of courses of medicine really had to take care of. But the Surgeon General's office and the foundation wanted to make a small presentation of challenge coins, do you want to... May I?
Certainly. Are they spendable?
I just can't hear. Thank you very much. Mary, I'm going to have to show you my coin collection from 411 Works.
We can compare collections.
I know you wrote there.
But we had, I would like to let you know that the results of that symposium quite impressed the Chattanooga area, the streets, lots of businesses in Eastridge were utilized. We had one-thousand-one-hundred, which is a hint, which means this area is very competitive for them to return. Next for the foundation's year, the term of symposium in the, probably in a few years or more, next year will be in Dallas. But when you get over a thousand, we look at that city to return to. Thank you all very much for your interest. Someone can try to attend. Housewoman, Elton, thank you very much for attending, we really appreciate it. The city and this area is a very nice surprise. First time in Tennessee, first time in the Chattanooga area. Thank you all for the support, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Next person is Laura Mathis, 2100 McBryant Road.
Hi, I'm Laura Mathis, 2100 at McBryant Road. I haven't been down to Camp Jordan a lot of years, and so I went down there to take a look. Back in May of 2017, we entered into agreement with Adventure Guild to build a road course flying the wild. Anything that sounds familiar?
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing's been done. The concrete blocks are there, but that's it. It's cement towers. It's not going to sit like that. Do they run out of money? Do they leave town?
No, ma'am.
It's, I mean, everything's going forward. We've got to build a road, and I met with Mr. Who did I meet with this week? Norman Branum. And we're going to put a road out there, but we're going to do the first road over on the other side, which goes to the boat launches out there.
You can get launched.
Yeah. But we're looking at next spring. That was the original time we were trying to get it in anyway. We're not behind on scheduling it up.
Also, there was a grant, a hundred percent grant for a dog park that was discussed earlier this year. I realize that this McBryant School is going to take some time to get the project moving for the town center, but I would hope that we could move on to dog park because it was a hundred percent grant. We haven't received a grant yet. I just applied for it, so we haven't heard anything. So there's no funds yet that we're working on. The Chattanooga Flying Disc Club was the... Frisbee golf players. They lost their course when brass passed through at dinner, and it would be really nice if that could be reexamined.
That has been... That is a word. It's restored.
It is. Has anybody contacted them? Because it's just like two weeks ago.
They're out there playing along with them.
There was also a bit of tournament recently. I talked to them all the time. They play all the time, and they're very happy with what we've done with it.
Yes, I talked to them on the eleventh, I talked to them.
Who did you speak with?
Who's ever in charge of the Flying Disc Club.
Yeah, they have, and that guy in my phone never talked to me on a regular basis. We don't have any problem with those clubs. Good boys.
Back in 2010, Mayor, you stated that we would like to see the pool saved or help the foundation. Well, that's what we know today as to be the Walmart.
Right.
At that time, did you feel like we were going to be able to maintain the pool?
Here's how those events unfolded. And Mr. Sewell was here, Mr. Manning was here. The community, the Eastridge Youth Foundation approached this council at the last minute. They were going to be foreclosed upon, the bank was going to take over the property. So they asked for us to essentially bail them out, and we did that, but we bought the property. And our only promise to them was that certainly our intention would be to keep a water feature, a pool there, if it's at all possible. Our insurance carrier came in after we closed on that property, and our insurance carrier looked at it and said, you're crazy if you think we're going to insure this. It had the original type of filters that were installed in 1970, which are illegal, against the law. There were a billion dollars worth of problems there. And Mr. Buthan was on the council at that time, too. And Mr. Bethan was on the council at that time, too. Would we have, have liked to have saved the pool? Absolutely. Was it possible? Not unless we wanted to spend a ton of money.
Do you recall what you sold the property for?
I do. I believe it was six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, we only paid half a dollar for it, so.
Correct. It was.
All right.
I think that's a good thing. I don't, I don't think there's something wrong with it.
No, I go out at the pool, and I, you know, I wonder what happened to it, because at that time, I wasn't really paying attention to what was going on around East Ridge. You also stated that you are opposed to the sale of alcohol in Camp Jordan. What, you said what, what people don't probably realize is that currently it can be done, but only with council approval. So, if that's the case.
Again, to give you some history, going back to all the documents that we talked about earlier during the agenda session, there was a, an ordinance that passed that was vaguely written, and it allowed the city manager to issue special event departments, even on city property. I objected to that because I didn't think it was stated clearly enough for my text. I said, I did say that I disagreed with what was the attempt at that point, and I stand by it.
Okay, so is it, back then you were opposed to alcohol sales and public approval?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
And I also want to say about the gentleman that said he just moved here, you know, if you're talking about what's going on by exit one, you're correct. There's a lot going on down there, but if you live on the other side of Ringo Road, it does look more. So, I have to say, yes, you know, I know you got a lot going on.
When you say the other side, what side are you talking about?
From the tunnels?
Yeah.
Down to, say, Kenwood?
What about that new audio shop that's being built up there, brand new one? That's up there. That's one, but I mean, I mean, it's slowly coming, but we're seeing some progress with some new structures, as a matter of fact. Family Dollar is eight years old. Family Dollar is two years old there. Ace Hardware is. You know where the old audio shop is on the, on the, on the south side? They're building a new building right next to it.
Well, I just, I hope a lot of these things that, you know, we've had in the works actually come true, because, I mean, there's been times in the past when, like, we had a Saks piece coming, and they changed their mind because the developers would sell the property.
Saks piece is still looking in East Ridge. And there's, and there's, and let me just say, I know the specifics of that. That is not exactly accurate.
Not accurate?
That, that they said no because the exit one guys wouldn't sell their property. We had actually, there was a bill out here where the Speedway is, and I don't know what happened there, it's something to do with him and the bank or whatever, but that didn't happen. We've had with it two or three times, and I'd like to decide it's going to ring up, but they are looking here. There's a lot of other people looking at the top of that, still be making.
Right now, I've got seven businesses that are looking at coming in and building new stores on vacant parcels up and down Ringo Road.
Not just ten?
Seven stores. I'm not going to tell you where, and I'm not going to tell you who they are.
Ron, right here.
Because it's not my job.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you're a real estate agent. Is there interest in Ringo Road right now?
We are really excited about Ringo Road and about East Ridge. We have three other contracts. I have two more people from out of town that are calling us and saying, if this doesn't work, put us on their contact list, because we will make an offer. So, and it is happening, I promise you. I get it every day.
He's on the line.
He certainly is.
And that's who I'm, I'm one of the guys I'm working with.
I just love people will be happy about the good things that are happening in my town.
And I think, and I think that maybe what has kind of rubbed me wrong tonight.
Good things are happening. Let's be happy about it. We can't force the developer to go on the west end. We can encourage it, we can improve the streets, and that's what we're trying to do. I love this city, and I wish everybody would just be a little bit more positive.
We've had discussions, we've had discussions with us, we're looking at property, but we can't force them to do it. We can encourage them to try that, give them incentive, we try to work with them, but you can't twist their arm and make them redo us a plan. But I love to.
They're working on that one right now.
Understand that, but.
Yeah, I think they're working on a plan for that right now.
There's a lot of things going on. There are, and, you know, I think you said it extremely well, Ms. Ellen. There are enough good things going on, we should be celebrating that, instead of bemoaning the fact that every parcel on Ringo Road isn't going to be developed.
We're all in this together, and if some, if the west end starts booming, I'm going to be happy. It's eight miles long. We are so lucky that we don't have to drive an hour to get anywhere. Let's get some things going in this town so we can shop here, eat here, play here, and then we can start promoting the city. I agree, we need to, I think we need to make a commercial. This is a great town, and the residential areas are slowly coming back over Marple area. That is a hot place to live right now, and I'm proud. I'm very proud of that.
Curtis Baker.
No, I'm sorry. One, one thing I need to stop, back now. Years ago, I'll take you to the river. Years ago, the whole middle of the, the, the fleet was dead. And after the burst, the other side coming down, other end going up, it's a great thing happening all these years. Anybody get something, none of y'all per se, nothing's going on right now, just the body of situations, ain't all situations, you know, get the facts together.
I've been on this council for twelve years, and every council that I've been on has tried to do. Tim Thule was on here, Mr. Petty was on here, Mr. Carr, we've all, this is what we want. It's finally coming up. I'll be off council next year. I'll miss it, but I'm glad that while I'm on council, that things are moving up, and I think that is continuing to move up. I will be active in this, even though I'll be off the council. Give all my support. Like I say, we can't make people move. Right now, it's hard down at the, at the west end. That's, that's where people will go. They're going one out of the road, then they're coming up. There's, I was told a name about a late flame from a developer that's looking to come in the East Ridge, and it's just a lot, let's say, he's, he knows a set right now, just coming in that he can't tell us about. It's, it's going to be the next year and a half, it's going to really be moving. So, you know, everybody needs to look at the bright side, quit looking at the, at the dark side. That's, I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to do, all we can do is we need everybody's support. You know, all five East Ridge categories, it's open that and all.
I occasionally venture into the, the mess and mayhem that is Facebook, and I see some of the people on there, and I, I think, good grief, I can get up in the morning, you know? I mean, just so negative, and I think if, wow. Be grateful for sunshine, for breathing, you know? Be grateful for something. Anyway, I digress. Mr. Baker? It's always good to see you, sir.
Curtis Baker, six eight, twenty years old. Just a player of, I can remember, like, you were late in November, I can remember, I've been in East Ridge for probably about fifty-four years, and I lived out there, I loved Camp Jordan Park, and it was a dairy farm at that time, so it's come a long ways, and it's a beautiful park, a beautiful family park. And I know we're making additions to it all the time, the road looks great going up there, and the lighting getting that, and it's like that now. It is, it's really, you know, I've heard a lot of discussion in the house about the beer in the park, and I think all of y'all know kind of how I feel about that. To me, it's kind of sad that we, a special event won't come into the park because they're afraid, they can't say a beer, and somebody won't come because they can't buy a beer for them. It's a sad time, and we're in to do it. And I realize, you know, some people like a beer, that's fine with me, but we've got plenty of places we can go sit down, have a beer, and this kind of thing. I don't think we need it in our family park. You know, we talked about, or somebody mentioned River Bay. If you pull it up on the internet from the New Street Press, they had thirty-six of the rest at River Beneficial, thirty of alcohol related, and most of those were mimes. They got the beer somewhere. Anytime we have a big event, you got to think about where you're walking, you're going to have beer that you can't control. And do we want to turn possible, I'm not saying now, possible, potential drunk drivers loose on our streets in East Ridge? If you have an incident there, that's what's going to happen. You can't control how much a person comes to drink, especially at an event like that. Do we want that on our streets in East Ridge? I don't think so. And I know Mr. Reef down here tonight, it's going to be a security nightmare to me, I think. I mean, how are you going to control when you have those people drinking beer? If you go to an event now, and I quit going to some of the, because NASCAR races, if you go to NASCAR race, you can't enjoy it. Somebody behind you is just cussing and hollering, going beer, and all this kind of stuff. You can't enjoy an event where you've got beer on it. The bottom edge is just about getting played, your baseball games. They sell beer there, you can't enjoy it. You can't take your things because people get hungry, and I can't see if we're going to be able to control it then. I don't care if it's awful, and I don't think, you know, it's time we spend some cash for our morals. And what we can wrap, and not worry about, especially with the answer for revenue. If they don't come in, come and say they'll beer, I don't think we're dealing. Don't let them dictate what we're putting in our park. I'll get off, I'll, but I thank you, council.
Thank you, sir. We have enough. That's not sad. We will move on to communication from council members. Mr. Cagle?
Yes, sir. Of course, tonight. I got a veteran memo today. I'd like to thank the family of Mr. Paul Starks for the two ten thousand dollar donations, one to the museum, one to the library, and I know that both places use it, so we'll figure out how to spend for later. That's all I've got to say. I mean, one more thing, I'd like to thank Melvin for taking care of the young moron probably had a broken back or something.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sewell?
I think I worship him.
Mr. Wade?
Like you may, I'll say to this Starks family, my condolences and the appreciation for the, the donation to the twenty thousand dollars to the city. Absolutely appreciate it.
I agree, I agree that as well. That's very generous. Thank you. I attended the East Ridge Middle School family block party celebration on Friday, October the twentieth, and that took place because they, they recognized the student growth score of a composite five from last spring's state testing, so they had that in front of them. And it was just a lot of fun watching the kids and the students and the parents have a good time and celebrating that, because they are doing a lot better, and they are considering themselves rising stars in the student achievement.
Very good. Very good folks there. Principle is, is excellent. They're all working very hard. We appreciate that. Just to echo Mr. Cagle and Mr. Williams, and I guess everyone at this point, thank you to the Starks family. It was certainly a very, very generous thing to remember the city. And I know, obviously, Paul Starks was a fixture in the community for many years, and in a different way, but as much as he was a fixture, Ms. Starks was a fixture as well. Certainly a fantastic thing. We're very grateful to them. That is all that I have. Mr. Miller, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. You all, placed in front of all of you tonight, a letter dated October nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, from the State of Tennessee, Comptroller of the Treasury, Office of State and Local Finances, and this is in regard to the four point nine million dollar bond issued, or I should say, capital note that the city executed between itself and the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund via the City of Clarksville, because they are actually the funding vehicle for these transactions, for the whole state of Tennessee. I do have to do a report on debt obligation. I'm not going to read this letter by the lights, three pages long. Want to, I'll flip, leave a copy up here so you can look at it. The date issuance was actually the last, this past Monday, when we signed it for official papers. Face amount's four point nine million dollars, twenty years, and an interest rate of two point five five percent. The description of the project is exit one, Ringo Road, I seventy-five, reconfiguration project, specifically is a reconfiguration of the road system on the east side of I The total costs, both hard and soft, when I say that, soft costs include your design engineering and your construction management services with engineers. The hard costs are those in regard to street lighting, the acquisition of the mast poles, the work that was done with sewer line, we had to do the emergency sewer line work. That all came out to a total of six point nine million dollars. That's both hard costs and soft costs, so that's the total cost of exit one energy at this time. The grants and appropriations the city received was one point five million dollars from TDOT, five hundred thousand dollars from Hamilton County. So, that needed basically necessitated the city borrowing for the need to borrow four point seven million dollars. Since we're dealing with, dealing with infrastructure that's been in the ground for fifty-plus years, made sure that we had several hundred thousand dollars on draw in case we needed it for any change orders. We've already accomplished one change order, it cost us several days delay, and that was a four-inch line that nobody knew existed out there. And first I said, well, just block it off and cut it out, until I found out that the four-inch line serves the welcome center on I seventy-five. I said, I better not do that. So, there's going to be a change order on that one that's coming down the pipe, because we're going to have to move it. TDOT is going to work with, with the American, Tennessee American Water, getting that done, but we did have to, going to have a little over in regards to the engineering costs. Hopefully, we don't come into any other conflicts, but, you know, when you're talking about structures, when we're doing sewer line work out there, we actually found sewer lines that have been abandoned, we didn't know what it was there for, it didn't show up on any maps. So, we had to do the testing of the water to make sure that it wasn't an active line. We found out that it was not, so that was, that was good news. But we are going to incur costs, especially when you're talking about underground work. Did anyone just say? Oh, the cost of issuance for a four point nine million dollar bond issued. If you went through the general obligation process, you're looking at usually one and a half percent issuance costs. If you go through the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund like we did, our total cost was twenty nine thousand four hundred dollars. Quite a difference between one and a half percent of four point nine versus twenty nine thousand, so. We have this money on draw. If we don't need full, full four point nine, then we don't pay interest on the four point nine, so we have twenty years. And the payment of the debt service on an annual basis will be from the border region sales tax generated within border region district of the city of East Ridge. Anybody have any questions? I just basically have to make note that I gave a report. I just basically have to make note that I gave a report at the first meeting after the closing, which was Monday. And I can sign this paper, get it off, fulfill that little check for Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. In old business, we have item A, which is ordinance number one zero five five, here on second and final reading.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at forty-two oh nine Ringo Road, Tax Route number one six nine H dash seven dash zero one seven, from R one residential district to C two general commercial district.
Do we have a motion in regard to this ordinance?
Motion to approve ordinance number ten fifty-five.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, please help. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mayor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Yes, Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Item is approved. Item B, ordinance one zero five six, here for us on second and final reading.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, amending ordinance number six seven one to amend the East Ridge Air Pollution Control Regulations by providing for revised rules for new source review, increased permit fees, revised ambient air quality standards, and certain prosecuting provisions.
We have motion.
I have a motion to approve. Ten fifty-six.
Sir. We have a motion and a second. I think you could probably take your pick, but Mr. Sewell does help at the same time. Are there any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mayor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Yes, Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Item is approved. Moving on to new business. Item A, ordinance one zero five seven, on first reading.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the East Ridge City Code, item two, chapter one, title of Library Board by incorporating new provisions pursuant to applicable laws established in two thousand seventeen, Tennessee Public Acts, chapter one, two, six.
All right, we referenced this earlier in the agenda work session. Give you a, a very thumbnail sketch, and then I'll turn it over to either Mr. Litchford or Mr. Miller. The legislature recently enacted, passed legislation that has become law, has been signed by the governor, that changes certain provisions in terms of how the municipal libraries are being operated. And one of those things, you'll see these changes incorporated into the ordinance. One such provision is the number of board members on the library board. We operate it with five. The new revised statute indicates you have to have seven, nine, or eleven, I believe. So we are going to have to increase the number of board members by at least two. I believe that's how the ordinance has been drafted, to increase that number, so.
Yes, sir.
At this point, I'll let either one of you two jump in. Mr. Miller or Mr. Litchford, either one.
Go ahead, do you draft the new ordinance?
If that's correct, this is a new, various statutes in connection with two thousand seventeen legislature with regard to the library, operation libraries. Codified, became law, and so as a result, we got together, Mr. Miller and I got together. We reviewed it, we had discussed with MTS representatives that have evaluated the new legislation. Had one or two phone calls, I think you really might have had a follow-up correspondence, so we collaboratively worked to look at the current ordinance as it's written and make sure that it is consistent with new law. And so as you see here, the new ordinance is drafted, one zero five seven. Mayor, council, that's correct, from my understanding, the decision was to increase the number of members in the board from five to seven. So we provide that in section one of the ordinance, which will go and replace code section two dash one zero one. With regard to the duties of libraries in the code of two dash zero for one zero four under section two of this ordinance, the new ones of that, the, really, instead of a librarian, it's now wanted to be identified as a library administrator. It's not really a change in terms of what the duties are, except for the name changes, difference, you'll see that we updated that section. With regard to section three of this ordinance, we will amend code section two dash one zero five by providing the library accounts every character shall be audited annually by the city. This is a provision that is required by state law. No requirement or limited as to who does it, I understand the city has, does its audits and has an annual audit of this library order. We can have it as long as done in court. Section four of this ordinance is added as it relates to the library property proceeds. And it provides the title to all property acquired by a library board. It's gonna be taken in the name of the City of East Ridge for the use and benefit of the public library. And that those would be, all activities conducted by the library board shall be taken in the name of the City of East Ridge for its use and benefit of the public library. And so this just allows for proceeds that are received for that, it's going to the library. And lastly, section two, or section five of this ordinance, which will identify there being a subsect, a section of section nine, is gonna be added, which requires the furnishing of an annual report to the East Ridge City Council at the first meeting of each fiscal year, which in this case will step forth as capital operation receipts, which we receive fiscal year. And this is codified in state law to provide for more transparency with regard to libraries and operational libraries. So that's, that's the rundown of what this is. We believe, Mr. Miller, not working, that once, if this is approved by this council, that the code sections that relates to the library and the operation of the library board will be consistent with state law.
Just a couple of condition, additional information. The library board at their last, maybe it was two meetings ago, when I sat down with them and gave highlights of the changes, they went ahead and adopted the city's rules and regulations to pay for the library board to the library employees. So the employees fall under the city's personnel rules and regulations as they exist today. There was a question that was brought up in reference to the library board. Should there be a surplus at the end of the fiscal year in the library budget? Does the library receive the surplus for their spending? The answer is yes. And the language is worded in the state statutes as follows. Library board shall have line item control of the budgeting and expenditure of all monies collected, donated, or appropriated for the library fund, and may set aside for future use any unencumbered funds remaining in the general fund or any other funds the library at the end of fiscal year. So if we, the city council approves the library funding, say two hundred thousand dollars. At the end of the fiscal year, they only come up and spend a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. That five thousand dollars stays with the library board, and then they spend it on the library items. That's in the statutes, so the, the, so, not like, unlike all the other departments, you know, we zero everything out at the end of the year in the general operating fund. Don't do that in the library fund.
All right.
Mayor, I just want to bring up one other item.
Yes, sir.
I know you asked, when we talked about this at the work session last month, about appointees to library board.
Yes.
At this time, I have one, two, three. I have three names that have been provided to me. And at the next meeting, it's supposed to be tonight on first reading, which I suspect it will, second reading will be at the November ninth. So at the end of that agenda, I'll put down appointees and these, these names, and I will relay them by team. If you want to make those additional appointments, in this case, it will be two additional appointments, written from five to seven.
All right. Is there a motion in regard to ordinance one zero five seven?
Motion to approve.
Sir. We have a motion and a second. Have read through it, read through it, read through it. Reading through it before time, just to make sure that one thing about the two new people that we will add, and I don't see language specific to how they will be appointed. It just says the seven members are residents of the city, and they will be appointed by the council. The way we do it currently is each member of council has one appointee. I'd like to make those two positions, the new positions, subject to the entire council vote. But basically, the entire council makes those last two appointments, and each council member has one, and then the council as a whole does the last two.
Yeah, have Janet Middleton.
Can you open that on the other end, please?
It is, that's exactly right. Yes, you have a question?
Well, I have that same question.
Okay.
The question is, listed in section two dash one, I'm just talking about the, the, does that impact the existing members?
No.
Or only the new ones coming in?
The new, the new members appointed are gonna have to be dovetailed into what the five terms, in terms of the five members that are all existing. Janet's going to provide a, a chart with the members on there, how long they've been on there, because we have to have.
Right, because there's one or two here.
Yes, exactly.
I wonder how that would impact the existing.
We don't know that until we add the names, and then we'll have the five members that are on there now, whether, how many four years they had, what the terms were. That would give us a location of the two new ones that would be appointed, how many years the names are.
And if I, at least exactly, I think we got one that's coming off, and this here too.
One that's, yeah, one that's due for.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think, I think different.
A point or whatever. Whatever the word was, I'll call the agenda session.
It was on the, the process.
Okay, that's. Yeah, there's no questions. Okay, any other question? Janet, we can have a roll call, please.
Ms. Mayor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Yes. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Item is approved. Item B is the public hearing that would have been for ordinance one zero five eight, but the applicant has asked for this to be pulled, so we will not do that. Okay, yes. Have some email communication here that is in writing. She wants to make sure that we are postponed or off the agenda. So, so yes. That has been done. And then, that also obviously impacts item C, which would be first reading of ordinance one zero five eight. That as well has been pulled. Item D, ordinance one zero five nine, on first reading.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number one zero five four, titled, an ordinance to provide revenue for the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, for the fiscal year of July one, two thousand seventeen, to June thirty, two thousand eighteen, appropriating the same to the payment of expenses of the municipal government by designating a portion of the fund balance of the general fund and by changing the revenues of the general fund, drug fund, debt service fund, and capital projects fund, and by changing the expenditures of the general fund, DOJ forfeiture fund, drug fund, solid waste fund, debt service fund, and capital budget, capital projects fund.
Ms. Balls, do you have anything to say?
Any questions? I tried to be as detailed as I could with the memo.
What do you have, Saint Thomas Center, council?
Eighty-nine, what's gonna end up being?
That's what's shown on the, yeah. Say, what is going to count from the other side then, or are we gonna?
That's told, that's told. One side being down the other side's gonna be done next week. I need, I need a thirty day cure for the eight inches of concrete.
Well, the same now. That's what we have, take a cure of both sides, we'll make another meeting for Saint Thomas.
This is the whole contract.
That's the whole contract.
No side.
That's it. Good looking building down there, looking forward to digging it open. What we will have to do is leave, I guess, Mr. Taylor, I guess driveway right there, I heard he's complaining that people's going in there, whatever built that crack, I guess, that's all.
Oh, there's a section in the, in this, on the side, and I don't have an independent contractor to do that. I'm not willing to pay the overhead that the general contractor paid for, I'll just have concrete. It's minor, it's not gonna cost more than probably a hundred dollars.
I will say that between first and second reading, because of the, the Stars gift to the city, I will have to put that into the budget to reflect it. So that will be the only change that I know of, that you have something, I don't know.
All right. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mayor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Item is approved. Item P, resolution two seven one eight.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to approve the attached change order request from S and E with regards to gravity sewer repairs at the exit seventy, at the I seventy-five exit point interchange.
May I have Scott McDonald from S and E, Scott, will you come up, answer any questions? This is a change order for the engineering services. What I want to do is just review over this briefly. One, we entered into an agreement with S and E. The engineering services, permitted design services, construction management services, have totaled sixty thousand five hundred and thirty dollars in this budget. First time we bid this project out, we received no bids. We had to go back and redo the process. And we ended up with two bids a second time around. First excavating LLC was the most responsible bidder. And that amount of contract awarded to them was two hundred fifty-six thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars, which included a forty thousand reserve in regard, if, to assist if we needed to expend additional dollars on any unknowns. We did use a small portion.
We did use a small portion of it, but on that contract alone, we ended up, the total cost of the construction, $206,909.50. That was the total for that project. We saved $49,447.50 on the construction contract with Hurst. However, on the engineering, because there was actual additional engineering costs in regard to geotechnical permitting and design services, and those were outlined in Mr. McDonald's letter to me, under date of September twenty-second, the additional work was unforeseen at the time, because there was additional work out there dealing with the manhole, that necessitated changes in the plans, and, as well as additional geotechnical work. Change orders asking for is a total of $23,815. Take the total to be $4,411.50. So we look at the total cost of this contract, hard costs and soft costs. We have a $49,000 plus reduction in the contract, and an addition of $23,815 on the engineering aspect of the work. So you look at the project was approved, hard costs and soft costs, at a total of Final costs, including Mr. McDonald's request for a change order, comes out of $291,319. So in essence, we're looking at a total of project costs for the sewer work on our I-75, savings of $25,526. But just before you denied us the change order for additional services for unforeseen issues that we found, we got, we ended up finding what pipe that wasn't even supposed to be there, line wasn't supposed to be there, so we were required to do additional testing to ascertain whether or not that was active, and then any other changes.
Yeah, and actually, that manhole was very, when we exposed it, the design that we had to rehab, we had to redesign it in the field while the contract was there, to keep it from getting shut down. So there was a lot of time for those to bring in that. It was unforeseen.
Overall cost, but we still had, we begged it enough money for the overall cost to still come in, so.
Yeah, it's a total, yeah, we were, we had $316,000 appropriate for the total, for this total project, and so we come in at $25,526 less.
How many times do you come in under budget on any project?
Well, some projects that Hurst came in.
We also came in almost three weeks, and it's scheduled to.
Thank you. Do we have a motion in regard to resolution two seven one eight?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Your line.
Yes. Item is approved. Thank you. Item F, resolution two seven one nine.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving a bid for the purchase of one side of the automated refuse election truck.
Melvin, you want to talk? One arms up. Melvin, I reviewed over the bench, Melvin feels that second bidder, Lee Smith, $172,001.38, we should go with them, I'm sorry, the Lee Smith International Bridge Board. Because it has a five-year warranty on the floor and size of the body, the little bidder only has a one-year warranty on the floor and size of the body, and four additional years on that. It's a Cummins diesel.
Cummins diesel.
And a John Deere.
Allison transmission.
Yeah, the Allison transmission, that's one.
Arm seatbelts, yeah.
Seatbelts for sure.
Arm seatbelt.
So they can see them?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's nothing wrong, there's nothing wrong with arms. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments or questions?
He made it back for the door, really. Maybe we're in.
We just have one, this, we're all set for the next couple of years, aren't we not?
We got one life here. And one, and one three years ago.
Yes. So we're set, a couple more years. These are expensive.
If we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Your line.
Yes. Item is approved. Item G, resolution two seven two zero.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to extend an agreement with Republic Services Inc., formerly Allied Waste Services, to dispose of the city's solid waste.
Okay, we entered into agreement with Allied Waste Services now, Republic Services on August of 2011, to dispose of all their solid waste at the transfer station located down on Thirty-Eighth Street in Chattanooga. That service agreement was for a year to August of 2012. The contract agreement provided a renewal for five additional years, which takes it up to August, so, of 2017. Over section four of the agreement says, no events shall the entire length of the agreement be extended beyond ten years. Mr. Stone is a major county executive in Public Services, and myself, and Melvin Petty are sanitation superintendent. And, Mr. Stone, needs to pass a proposal to extend this agreement for ten years, which will take it till August of 2021, with a rate increase of four percent, which will take it from $31.50, which was the same rate we paid in August of 2011, and at the state, it would increase to $32.76 per ton for the period until August of 2021.
Wow.
Just for your information, we've been at the CPI increase just for that five-year period from two thousand, or six-year period, from 2011 to 2017. I have that attachment to the meeting agenda, that the CPI increased 13.14 percent. So the four percent is a good increase, it's a good deal for us, and therefore, we recommend that the city proceed further in improving the extension to the additional four years. After that, we're going to have to bid this out again, that's just a regular, going to be ten years.
Motion to approve.
Second question.
Yes, sir.
All right, on page one of the contract here, the third sentence from the bottom says, "Let's permit any hazards waste, special waste, the yard waste." Okay? You know, from page three, item number ten, yard waste is scratched out, so we go in with all yard waste.
Melvin? What do you now? Our question, we got it, just what they put it in, we don't know.
Yeah, well, we'll just say.
They've always been good, they've never questioned nothing we've took, you know, down there.
So here says, "Let's permit over here, it's scratched out, so I'm taking it that we can haul it."
We shouldn't be hauling yard waste to a transfer station. We should not.
We don't pick it up, just the yard waste and haul it, like, the only, we get, ball back, eighty-seven, eighty-seven, we get, they take it, you know, just what people put it in, if you don't know, we don't take it.
You're going to find a lot of people that do do that. I mean, if I'm going, to be honest with you, I pull weeds in my front, I get a handful of weeds, I throw them in the garbage, I mean, I, I'll consider them a pile in the street, just a little pile, you know, we can seize.
Yeah, it's funny.
Well, hey, it's my fault.
Are you worried?
I know, it's recording me. But you know, if I'm going to do a lot of tree trimming, and get a big pile, that's what we haul that away, but we shouldn't be...
If we say it can after a full brush, it gets bigger by brush.
Yes, absolutely.
Where's my permit, it's scratched out, same key.
No, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be filling the landfill with dirt, like you're brushing your trees, that exposes over a period of time, don't put that in the landfill. We chip it all up, we have that service with the city that you, any kind of brush, if you want to take it yourself, or put it in front of your yard, or pick it up, buy a brand new truck that's been, what, several months old?
Six months.
Six months old? Okay, six months old, to do that kind of work.
All right, do we have any other questions?
I, one of your other questions, do we have a dumpster over weekends that's out that people go to, if they wanted to take their own, stuff like that?
No, we're open, happy day, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We'd be open all day, about twelve o'clock in the morning, what can you sort of do?
Thank you. We have the roll call, please.
Ms. Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Your line.
Yes. Item is approved. On the grand consent agenda, there's just one item, it would be resolution two seven two one.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the application for acceptance of the Matties Fund Innovation Grants.
Do we have a motion?
To approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. We have the roll call, please.
Ms. Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Your line.
Yes. That item is approved. Last item is going to be item I, a request from East Ridge Elementary School to waive the fee for the use of the arena and picnic pavilion in Camp Jordan for their fifth grade promotion. We have a motion to approve and a second, and this is going to be Tuesday, page twenty-second, from four to nine p.m. We have the roll call, please.
Ms. Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Your line.
Yes.
All right. That concludes all the items of business. Thank you all again for being here, and we will see you in two weeks. Any other questions?